Could the members of the board introduce themselves, please?
Alternate Molly Friedland.
John Delia.
John Finn.
Rick Lyles.
Mark Rich.
Thank you. Next item of business is adoption of the minutes from the July 7 meeting. Is there a motion regarding the minutes, please? Second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please? Seeing that there are five of us here, let's see. I would like, who is senior alternate?
Senior alternate?
Yes.
Geez.
Isn't that impressive?
It's quite impressive, yes.
You'd be voting this evening. And so are you, Mark.
I'm not an alternate.
Oh, you're not?
He graduated.
Where have you been?
Patrick.
I don't know.
It's the mask, it throws him off.
Yeah, well, I can't tell with the mask on. No excuse?
No.
Next item of business is preliminary plan for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Solar Maine, Ellsworth Maine Solar. For Ellsworth Maine Solar LLC, the proposal is to construct a 4.98 megawatt solar energy facility on a 48.68 acre parcel, tax map 30, lot 15, located at 889 Bucksport Road. All of the subject property is located in the rural and drinking water zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Several people here should be on the table, or...
Yes, as you wish.
To the microphone.
Oh, actually, you'll be to the microphone, please.
Can Jason put some... Is that necessary, or does it go up on the screen, or just what you guys prefer, I guess?
You have...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And any, is there other people gonna speak? If so, then they may wanna, if we can get Jason to put some microphones and chairs at that table.
Yeah, we can probably even split this. Okay. We'll need two.
Yes. Sure.
These are two right now, these are two sets of the updated plans.
Okay.
And I gotta fill this out here.
I think that'll be okay. Okay.
Hi.
So, tell us what all of this is about, please.
Okay, sure. My name is Sean Hale, I'm from VHB. We are the environmental consultants and the design engineers on the project, and we're working with Amoresco, who's the project proponent. Joel Lindsay is here from Amoresco. And Caitlin Glass is here from VHB as well, and she's the engineer on the project, and we're working collectively on the project. Want me to just give a brief overview, and then...
Yes, please.
...go to questions? Okay. The project sites at 889 Bucksport Road in Ellsworth. It's about a 40-plus acre parcel owned by the Awalt's. And they're proposing about a six-megawatt solar facility on the property. We started working on the project last fall. The first thing we did was go out there and do natural resource surveys, wetland surveys particularly. We also sent out agency consultation letters, which is a part of our standard procedure when we're getting into permitting at the state, federal, and local level. So we sent out consultations to Maine Historic Preservation Commission, Maine Fish and Wildlife, Maine Natural Areas Program. We had a pre-application meeting with DEP and the Corps of Engineers to review the project, get some preliminary feedback. We also had a preliminary meeting with the city of Ellsworth and representatives from planning and fire and other departments. And that would've been, I think, in February was the first meeting we had with the city. Once we did our natural resource surveys, we took a preliminary concept from Amoresco. When we moved into the design phase, and the plans that we've submitted as part of our application are the result of that process. Again, it's about a 45-acre parcel. If folks are familiar with the site, there's a large open field in the front portion of the property, and the back portion is wooded. The solar facility is situated in the back wooded portion of the lot. Probably set back about 1,500 feet from Route 1 to the south. The project involves, obviously, the installation of solar panels, also access. They'll be in, we will use an existing residential paved driveway off of Route 1. At a certain point, that driveway transitions to a gravel access drive. At that point, after consultation with the city, we're gonna improve and widen that gravel access road to a 20-foot wide gravel road for, to meet the fire department's specifications for safety and emergency access in and out of the site. And it will maintain that width through the project area, except for areas where we cross wetlands. We sought and got permission to reduce the road width to 16 feet in those areas to reduce wetland impacts, because we have to balance, you know, reduction of natural resource impacts, which is complying with, you know, other types of requirements such as road width. So, again, the access road, the panels, there's also gonna be a perimeter fence around the facility, chain link fence surrounding the entire panel area. These are all, you know, pretty standard components of a solar project. What else? Well, I should mention that the consultations we got back from the agencies were favorable. The Historic Preservation Commission did not, you know, get back to us with any particular concerns with regard to cultural or historic resources on the site. There's no known rare species or areas of unusual natural features according to the Natural Areas Program. So we received, you know, clear favorable responses from those agencies. We submitted our application to the city. The next thing for us to do in terms of permitting, we also are gonna be submitting a site law application to DEP, because the site is over 20 acres. So it trips the threshold for site law review with the state, and we'll be submitting a Corps of Engineers permit application to the Corps, because there are wetlands associated, wetland impacts associated with the project. There's a significant area of forested wetlands on the property, and we are proposing to clear areas of forested wetland to reduce shading of panels. And we're also proposing some direct fill of wetlands associated with widening and improving the access road. I think that's kind of a general overview of the project itself. Before I stop, I should probably also mention that we have to comply with state stormwater standards. That's a big component of the design of these projects, so, and Katie has worked on this. And we, as part of our plans that have been submitted to you, there is a stormwater management system, which consists mostly of vegetated buffer areas, which are not a structural feature at all, they're just areas where stormwater can run off access roads and infiltrate naturally into the ground. I think we have one basin proposed in one location for additional stormwater treatment. That's another, I guess, you know, important component of the project I should bring to your attention. And that will be reviewed by the state as well, under the site law process, in addition to the town's review and comment on it.
Thank you.
I think, at that point, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's probably, I don't wanna run on too long, that's a pretty good overview, and I can ask...
I believe you submitted a revised plan to the planning office, correct?
We did. So we submitted our initial plan a few, you know, I think it was, uh, the July...
I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay.
Normally, those should be in the hands of the board before the meeting. If this weren't simply a preliminary review where our focus is the completeness of the plan, had that happened on a final, I would certainly move to table it, because the material was not available to us really in time to digest it thoroughly. I just want you to understand that, and perhaps future applicants, that late, at last-minute submissions are not viewed favorably.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say, because it does not affect this particular hearing.
I completely understand that, and I'd like to address that. That was not our intent, to submit something at the last minute and expect you to have a chance to review it, not at all. It was simply to, we had received the initial technical review committee comments, and we've been working to address those comments. The intent was just to show that it's an interim plan, we know it's not the final plan. So, you know, when staff and the board have a chance to review it, please do. But it was certainly not something that we submitted with any expectation that you would look at it prior to this hearing.
Thank you. So, board, questions, comments?
Oh, I'll start off, kinda along the same line. I notice on, I mean, on the application, the check sheet that the staff does, and some of this information may have, may have gotten to the staff, but going through the application, I note where the preliminary meeting is to determine whether this is a complete application, there's 15 incompletes listed, which I, like I say, some of this information may have made its way to staff, but I don't know if it's come to the, to the board to say this application is complete. That kinda goes along with what the chairman just said. But some of my more specific comments, one is, have to do with buffering. And this is the first solar plan that we looked at that actually have neighbors. So I'm concerned about how this impacts the people that live on Catherine Avenue, how much wooded space is, is between the solar panels and the edge of your property. I know some you're gonna have to clear off to keep the shading down, but you know, how much, how much buffering is between those panels and the neighbors on Catherine Avenue, who may either abut those panels, or may be a little further down the road. I mean, are they, are they gonna be looking out their back window and see a couple thousand panels?
Sure. Can I speak to...
Yes.
Okay, sure, yes. Yeah, actually, I neglected actually to talk about that component of the design in my overview. We have taken that into consideration, and visual impacts we know are, often get a fair amount of attention with solar projects. So we've proactively looked at that. And in the area of the project, it's basically the southeast corner, which is the closest to the, the furthest residence on Cath, like, that's, you know, that road extends to the north. There are a couple of butters at the end of Catherine Road, which abut the southeast corner of where the development would occur. So in consideration of that, we've purposely left a 15-foot swath of, this is, again, there's already wooded property on, on the butters property, so they have wooded backyards to the property line. And then, on our side of the property line, the project side, we're leaving a 15-foot wide strip of the existing vegetation, so that will remain. And then in addition to that, we've proposed, there's a landscape planting plan, I forget which sheet number it is, but we're proposing a planting plan in that same area of evergreen, lower-growing shrubs, lower-growing evergreen species, trees as well, but again, lower-growing is we don't wanna have tall trees, we're getting rid of tall trees, we don't wanna then start planting tall trees. And that's specifically designed to shield views from that section of Catherine Avenue to that part of the project. So we certainly thought about that. We proactively proposed a visual screening plan, and we certainly, you know, expect the board to look that over and let us know what they think about it.
Okay. And then, on your Exhibit B, Terms and Conditions of the Lease Agreement, number 12, this is more, you have to bring the staff, has to do with taxes. Owner to pay all real estate taxes, Option A to pay all personal property taxes, or negotiate with the municipality, other payment and bill of taxes, arrangements satisfactory to Option E in sole discretion. And that's not a board consideration, but as a taxpayer, when somebody says they're gonna negotiate with the city for taxes, I mean, this is, I think, in your lease with the landowner, that just makes me a little nervous. The lease site itself, it seems like there's, a couple different acreages are thrown out. Talks about, this is actually, City of Ellsworth Development Narrative and Performance Standards Narrative. Trying to get you to the attachment four. I mean, it talks about a 17.2 acre piece of property, 35.49 area acre limit of work. Electrical sub-infrastrucure will be located within a fenced area covering 26.4 acres. I mean, if the fenced area is 26.4 acres, wouldn't that be what you're leasing from the property owner?
Joel can speak to this, but no, I think the lease area has to be larger than just what's inside the fence line, but Joel, please.
But it will, it will largely correspond to that. In terms of the fenced area, that's typically, that is typically what we would lease. So I don't know, I don't know exactly what you're looking at, if there might be some discrepancies, but that's in the general, that makes sense.
I think that's more of an issue between you and the property owners.
Right.
It just seemed to be a little discrepancy there. Thank you. I already touched on the buffers on the adjacent houses, I think I'd be concerned with that. Several past solar farms, the developer has agreed, actually one was already planning on doing, but to elevate the fencing up off the ground, I believe, did, did they agree to 12 inches, I think?
Something, I don't remember the numbers, but there was an agreement.
Yeah, but I also noticed that Mr. Burnett, Wayne Burnett, had sent us some information. Have you gotten a copy of this on the...
We did.
The wildlife fencing?
Yeah.
I mean, are you familiar with this, or, and how, how is this incorporated into a project like yours?
Our proposed fence does, there is a gap between the fence and the ground specifically for wildlife passage purposes, and Katie, what is, do you know what I'm talking about?
I believe it's six inches.
Six inches? So it's, I guess it's a six-inch gap, and that's, that's the purpose for that. And at this point, that is what we, what the plans contain in terms of wildlife passage for the security fence. We did get that, those comments from the butters, and we certainly are, I guess, I'd say in consideration mode, you know, looking at that, but haven't really had enough time to address those comments.
Just to add, you know, we, we have to make sure that we do comply with, with the electrical code in terms of, you know, providing proper safety barriers, so, but we'll definitely take a look at it.
Okay. I mean, staff, do you know, on the, the email that Mr. Burnett sent, I mean, this type of wildlife fencing, I mean, I went on the website, but there wasn't too much information as to, if the developer does put in fencing like this, how often would be sufficient? I mean, if you have, and what would be the approximate perimeter of the fence?
I don't know, the linear distance off the top of my head, sorry.
Mile?
Several hundred feet, I mean, a couple thousand feet, yeah, I don't think a mile.
Okay, so I, I just, I don't know how often one of these spaces would be, you know, if there's not enough, you know, animals could get in there and then spend five hours looking for a way out, versus a fence that's all the way around is up off the ground.
Yeah, I think like Joel said, I mean, we'll definitely look at it. I know that compliance with the electrical code is a big, maybe a limitation in terms of what they can do with the fence, but, you know, within the constraints to meet those types of codes, we'll certainly look at it.
Okay. On the stormwater, you're planning on submitting some more information as to what the stormwater issues are as far as if it impacts neighboring property?
Um, no. I mean, we've included in our narrative, in the application, we've addressed the city's standards on stormwater, and the plans do contain a detailed stormwater design. We also submitted an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater portion of the project, so we, I believe we feel that we've addressed stormwater. We do owe the city a copy of an operation and maintenance plan for the electrical, the solar part of the facility, which is a separate operation and maintenance plan from the stormwater. The stormwater gets its own, and so we know that's on our to-do list. But as far as stormwater concerns, we feel like we've submitted what we need to.
And we do have in the office, we did receive the three copies of the stormwater, all their calculations and a nice narrative, so if you wanna look at...
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at attachment six, that references the stormwater memo, three copies attached separately, and we have nothing.
Well, we sent them here.
But the ordinance...
The densest street you're talking about, right?
The ordinance, the ordinance does say how many copies of everything we should have.
And it's three.
And it's three.
Now, will we have those prior to, in plenty of time before the final plan?
Well, we have them now.
No, 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 the board members. We need to be, we need to be able to study those in advance. If you only have three copies in the office, I don't think that's going to be sufficient.
But that is what the ordinance requires, and it has...
Yes, but nonetheless, it would be a good idea if we could get copies of those, and perhaps the ordinance should be revised.
How many pages is this document?
It's a separate binder.
It's pretty big.
It's pretty long, yeah, it has all the Hydrad pad printout, so it's pretty good.
Those are always interesting.
I think we only require three, because not everybody felt the need to read them.
I would suggest that perhaps in the near future, we revise that requirement.
Okay.
The board should be able to have all this material for review.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Although there is a month between now and the next edition.
Yeah, if you need additional copies, they can certainly be provided.
Any questions?
Oh, maybe one more. It has to do with the decommissioning plan, you know, at some point, everything gets removed, gets recycled. I just wanna, could you give us a little information? I'm concerned about, I'm interested in learning more about, I mean, there's some minerals within the solar panels themselves that are supposedly toxic. Maybe you educate me a little on that. I mean, I know, you know, metal is recyclable, the silicone is recyclable, wire is recyclable, you know, what damage can these minerals pose to the environment? Either while the farm is operational, that the panel breaks, or during recycling?
Yes, that's a question we certainly get a lot. The, the panels are actually completely self-contained, they're, they're really made of silicon and glass, and there's, there are no toxic components to the, to the panels. There have been in the past, there have been panels, and there are some panels that are currently made, that do have some elements like cadmium, other things, but the panels that we use are crystalline panel, monocrystalline panels, they, they're, and those are typically what are used. They don't have toxic components. They could, they could literally just be landfilled, if they had to be. But, like you said, a good portion of them actually does have salvageable material, so...
Okay, that's nice to hear, that the minerals are not contained in the panels that you use.
Yeah, and the panels themselves are completely sealed anyway, in terms of, you know, how they're, how they're manufactured, so...
I think that would do it. Anyone else?
I have a couple. In your, I'm looking at this document, and you're responding to Section 801.5, I, there's no page number, so I can't do that. But anyway, you're talking about the buffering along Catherine on that side, right? And what you say is, "A minimum of approximately 15 feet of vegetated buffer will be retained between a limit of work and a limit of work and the closest residential structure." That's 15 feet, and this is for staff, that 15 feet is, is just a setback from the side, right? From the side property line?
Um...
I mean, they have to set back the, the solar stuff, you know, the installation from the side property line, just like it was a regular structure, or not?
Yes, I mean, there are setbacks for the panels, and we've met those setbacks.
That's 15 feet?
I think it's greater than that, actually.
15 feet in the rural...
But it's 15 feet is a minimum for, for the, per the ordinance, right?
Right.
Okay, so when you say 15 feet from the closest residential whatever, it's really 15 feet from the line?
From the property line.
Yes.
And, and then they have 15 feet as well, so there's at least 30 feet, at least 30 feet between the, your, your closest structure panel and the adjacent house, is that right? Now, that, well, that would be...
There's quite a bit.
Yes, and I think it's way...
I guess I'm not asking that, but that would be right.
Well, that is accurate, but I also think it's way further than that.
No, no, that's fine, but all I'm looking at is what you said, okay? And what you said is basically incorrect.
I'll have to look at that section, I don't have it.
I think when Sean referred to the 15 feet, he was talking, when Sean referred to the 15 feet, he was talking about the actual visual buffer, the actual existing vegetation that we were leaving in place.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't a setback per se, that was just, that was what we were leaving in place.
Okay, so the, so the limit of work actually has some kind of buffering area within that limit, then?
Outside that limit, from the limit of work, the limit of work, which is essentially a limit of clearing, we still left 15 feet...
Beyond that.
...to the property line that was essentially uncleared.
Okay, that's, that wasn't clear the way it was stated, but, gotcha. Somewhere in here, you mentioned in the, in the forms that you have to submit and so forth, you talk about three structures that are on, under development information, the application type thing, you talk about the number of existing buildings, three. Where are those buildings?
Well, in the, in the south port, it's a large property, and in the south portion, there's, there's existing residential, there's a house, and a garage.
Okay, so that's the house that the line seems to go through on this, on this map?
When you say the line, I'm not sure.
Well, there's a blue line that I presume is what you're developing, and that particular line goes right through a house, is that...
I'm sorry, I guess I'd have to...
I mean, I guess, I guess what's happening here is that I don't see those houses on the...
They are on the plan.
Master plan. Or are they?
Yes, please.
So, on the revised plans that you'll get, we made it very clear where the existing structures are.
On the master plan?
They, yes, they're on the master plan, and then in the submittal, that, the updated submittal, we included the survey.
Okay.
The topographic survey that was included.
Okay, and on the master plan, are the houses gonna be shown then, yes?
Yes.
I mean, they already, what you're saying is, they already are shown, on that map?
I think so, they for sure are on that updated set, yes.
Yep.
We made sure to include those.
And again, we knew, with the intent, it wasn't that you guys could, could see this, but one of the major comments we got in the technical review report was that we didn't submit a, a base plan with that, you know, so that is now in the plan set, and it addresses many of the comments that we received.
And this, this, the basic driveway that services the, you know, your development, that goes down the existing driveway, is that...
Correct.
Okay. And is that a public way?
No.
And do they, do you need, or do they need some sort of, you know, written easement to be able to do that? Or an agreement with the property owners or whatever? I mean, you're basically saying, this is your driveway, their driveway, and now we're gonna use it as a kind of...
I can let Joel's...
Yeah, and we will...
Is it in the lease agreement?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it in the lease agreement?
Yes, but I think Joel should...
The lease agreement provides for, for that, for us to essentially finalize, when we finalize what the actual extent of that is, then it provides for us to be able to have an easement that allows us access.
Okay.
Essentially, you, there's a, there's provision for a utility easement and for an access easement.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I saw that note someplace, but I didn't...
Yeah, and it's similar to what, there are already, there's a met tower and a cell tower that's already, that are actually on the property, and those have easements too, so we're, we're kind of working around those easements also, so...
Okay. And what do you, I think you've mentioned this already, but what are your plans in terms of treating that driveway slash access road that goes through the adjacent residential area?
Sure, so at the point that it goes past the, the residence that's there...
Yeah.
...it transitions from a paved residential driveway to just a, it's currently basically a dirt road, a gravel slash dirt road. So after discussions with the city, we're gonna improve and widen that gravel road to a 20-foot wide gravel road.
Okay, that's what we were talking about before.
Yep. And that will also involve stormwater treatment, to treat stormwater from that new wider gravel road.
Okay. And on other plans that we've had, we've talked about having hammerheads and so forth, you know, on the site to this little fake turning around of whatever it is you guys drive on site.
There's two.
Are, because I didn't, I didn't see them, but I maybe looked at the wrong map.
Well, the...
Well, there's one that's right at the very beginning of the solar pan, solar farm there. It's a little difficult to see unless you go to.
Oh, oh, I think I do see it.
And then there's one at the very end, and both of those meet the, meet the requirements for, for the car.
And one of the comments we got was to add the dimensions of those.
Yeah, make it visible.
So we've done that on the set that no one's seen yet.
Okay, gotcha, I'm, I'm good with.
Yep.
And that's okay with you, the hammerhead as designed, okay? I'm sorry, I just didn't see the tiny little line.
Yep.
I think that's it for me.
I do have one, Thomas, the transition between the driveway and the access road, is that sufficiently wide at that point for equipment?
Yes, so.
And where you turn off from the public road to the.
We didn't want to disturb any more of the yard because the trend, because when you turn onto the public, on the public drive there, it actually acts as a driveway for two properties, for the, the house on top of the hill, and then the gentleman that sells blueberries there to the left. So we didn't want, we didn't feel that we needed to expand that, that one particular area. We felt that if we got up past the house, that's technically where the actual transition could start because there's enough area out there to widen it. The gentleman's no longer harvesting blueberries off the property, so we didn't feel like we were impacting anything there. And then it goes twenty all the way back through, except for the wetlands areas where we felt was, we were comfortable shrinking it down to minimize the impact there.
Thank you.
I guess getting back to the, to the driveway, as it goes by, the driveway goes by a currently used house, correct?
Correct.
This is more addressed to Tom. I mean, what happens if the fire department has to go out there and there's, the driveway's full of cars visiting the occupants of the house? I mean, all of our other solar farms are, there's nothing else there. There's a driveway that goes into it, you guys have hundred percent access to it. You know, I'm a little worried about the blockage, you know, in the driveway.
Yeah, it's going to be a unique situation to where hopefully somebody can reach somebody in the house quickly enough to move. But Elena and I went up there last year, and if they park accordingly, there's plenty of space behind the house where the garage is, where they currently park now. So I, I guess the hopes is that we would work with these guys here and sit there and have them put something in a letter to the homeowners, so let them know that, you know, they need to make sure that it's a clear, clear access all the way through and not to block it.
Can that, yeah, can that be actually put in the lease agreement or whatever, to, that they have to, you know, leave it open?
I, I'll talk, I'll work with these guys after this meeting tonight and see what we can come up with.
Because I realize, you know, you, you can't necessarily guarantee what a private property owner's going to do, but it might be nice if it was in writing at least, what they, what they should be doing.
Right.
Well, I'm not so sure that would, if it's in a lease agreement, I'm not so sure that would help Tom. I think something like that would have to be on the.
Well, it may not help Tom, but at least you could sue somebody.
Right, so that's why I'm saying we'll, we'll, we'll come back around on this after this meeting, and I'll have a chance to talk to these guys.
Okay.
And then we can kind of, by the, by the next time we meet, we'll have a, we'll have a solution.
I mean, you don't have a piece of equipment sufficient to push the cars out of the way?
I'm sure we do, but I'm sure that I'd get in a lot of trouble. I'd rather not deal with anything else that I don't need to.
Anyone else?
Well, let me just ask staff one question. On, you know, the checklist, I imagine that there's fifteen incompletes. Has any of this information been turned over to the staff?
Some of it. So the actual TRT report, which really the spreadsheet is a part of, anything that was crossed out is something that was addressed in what was provided by the resubmission deadline. And then the, like, these plans, I haven't actually looked at yet. So I, I don't know for sure there, but probably a lot has been dealt with. Yeah, it's always kind of a tricky timeline for everybody involved, especially you don't know how much an applicant can turn around and provide after the TRT meeting by the resubmission deadline. So I'm not sure how you feel about completeness, but I think the only, the things, I mean, now we've heard that the survey is included, which I think is pretty key. Most of the incompletes on this spreadsheet are relatively minor features of the plan. I think probably the bigger things that are outstanding are having to do with the decommissioning operations and maintenance, all of that.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Let me say that this preliminary hearing is for completeness of the application. It does not necessarily mean that all the information that will be needed for the final is here today, but that each document that is required is here before the board. This is not the time that we would normally go into such details as whether they're acceptable, believable, or, or there. That is for the final plan. At that point, if something is missing, then it becomes a big deal. So we certainly would be able to find completeness even though there are details missing because the document is there. We're not judging whether it's adequate or not. So therefore, you can calm down a bit. And we can seem less frightening. That's it from the board at the moment. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public may comment upon this matter. I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the chair and then go up to the lectern and tell us your, or your question or concern. Does anyone wish to speak?
They're here for something else.
Ah.
Hello, Chair, do you recognize me? I'm John Reed from the Ellsworth Water.
You vaguely look familiar, but yes, would, if you have something to say, could you come up to the microphone?
Good evening, and I wanted to say hello to the applicants. I'm John Reed from the Ellsworth Water Park. Because you don't recognize me. Now you do. I just had a couple of easy questions, and then I'll happily sit down. And questions mostly are for the applicant.
But address them to the board.
Hello, Board?
Thank you.
Yes. The, I was curious, I, I did review all of the hydro cad calculations in detail because it's wicked enjoyable and fun. And I didn't catch where the actual final disposition of the water from the four catchment areas is going to. What are the, what are the, what are the watersheds for the water bodies that the water will be actually going to? Because in Maine, everything goes to a lake, a river, or the ocean. So I would like to know that. Simply because it is, it is addressed obliquely in the memo dated seven fifteen twenty-one to you from the applicant.
Are you then assuming that the, the water does not disappear by evaporation?
I'm assuming that we are not the Gobi Desert, yes. So that is, that is, that is a question that I'm curious about, simply because it is addressed verbatim obliquely in their memo to you. And the second question I had was. The, they detail a, a vegetated buffer as treatment for water quality. And vegetated buffers are recognized by the DEP as a valid way to treat stormwater. And where, if they're eliminating roughly thirty acres or so of forest land that has been there ostensibly for ten thousand years, eliminating a lot of duff. Duff does an amazing job filtering the water before it leaves any site. And just as a jar of pine nuts from a pesto isn't a pine forest, grass seed is not a vegetated meadow. Meadows take a long time to develop. It takes grass seed, of course, but it also takes time, soils, and more, most appropriately, the timing of the germination of those seeds. So you get a catch, it's called, before you have severe weather. So meadows are really crucial as to how they are made. They're not made overnight. And it listed two or three different entities that are responsible for the construction and maintenance of these meadows. And I just wanted the board to be comfortable with who, who they're going to call, so to speak, regarding, regarding that, because they're monitored at least twice a year, once initially established. And it's crucial to know who's going to be doing that kind of thing. The contractor is listed as one of those that's responsible for building it. And Amoresco is listed as responsible thereafter for maintaining it. So what my, a suggestion might be is for the city, either the water department or perhaps code enforcement office, to be the recipient of a copy of their ma, their maintenance logs, it's called, for their analysis of their wetland buffer that they check twice a year. And as DEP is listed now as a, as an entity that can say, so, how does it go? The city is not, and the city might enjoy that kind of oversight for that because it wouldn't be an extra effort on behalf of the, of the applicant or Amoresco in the future to do that. But it could produce a very good, warm feeling on behalf of the city as to how far the, how well the, that it wasn't working.
Then we, then we ask the, the applicant that was going to put in a solar farm kind of across from the North Ben Road for that information.
Yes.
The information that you just requested. So we have done that with, with the other applicant in the, in the watershed, so.
Yes, and I would think it would be, hopefully, long-term, that would be a very good neighborly kind of thing to do, and everybody will be on the same page. It really, it could reduce theoretically either impacts to the resources in the future or a greater awareness of everyone of what they are, so that there's no misunderstandings in the future.
And I'd like to hear Sean's response, but another, another comment I had for, for John is, okay, this is, this will be the third solar farm that we've reviewed that's in the Branch Lake watershed. I mean, the Branch Lake watershed is a big piece of property, and each development in and of itself probably does not have a detrimental effect on, on Branch Lake. However, at what point does, and not just solar farms, but other wood harvesting, in your mind, think, okay, we need to be careful about how much, how many trees we cut down in the watershed area? I mean, is there anything in the Branch Lake watershed ordinance that covers something like this? I saw something on TV not too long ago, they were talking about Sebago, and that the Portland Water District, I believe, when it got to a twenty-five percent wood harvesting threshold, would put a stop to any harvesting, or there were ramifications there. I just wonder, you know, have you thought about the cumulative effect of harvesting in the watershed?
Yes, just as one drop never thinks it's the cause of the flood, completely developed watershed is going to be a lot more impacted than one that is completely forested. The key thing is a forest is a living, a living creature, so to speak. And again, I'm, I'm jumping, I'm mixing metaphors here. But every tree, just like you and I, will die, eventually fall over, and then be eaten by bacteria. And new trees will grow up to replace us. That's called a forest. And if you harvest that tree before it dies and you make that table out of it, it's not impacting the forest because other trees will take its place. If you develop it with something that isn't a forest, that's where you have an issue. And that's called percentage of development issues. Now, the Portland Water District is in a good job evaluating percentage of development. And percentage of forestry is a little bit different because forestry, in a perfect world, is never-ending because trees come and go, just like you and I. And they provide a wonderful forest. We've got ten thousand years of experience in Branch Lake and the watershed of trees growing where it's unde, where it's undeveloped forest. And that forest has been cut two or three times in the past two or three hundred years. But it's still a forest, and it will still maintain the duff layer underneath that I mentioned earlier. And that, that will remain until somebody tears, cuts it down and develops it into a meadow. It's listed by the applicant as the same treatment concept. That same treatment level theoretically might work with a meadow because there is an existing meadow there right now, it's grass. But it's been developed, been developing for a long, long time. So the key thing is the amount of development is different. The amount of water coming off a landscape that's fully forested is different than grassland. You can check the DEP, review the DEP website for the different runoff coefficients there. It's a, the project is assuming for argument that it's the same, they're getting the same amount of treatment as meadow as completely forested. And that's something that if, if legally is documented and they can get away, they can utilize that, that's fantastic for their purposes. But again, I would say between now and the next time, check, check the difference if you want to know the difference between a completely forest, forested area and a grassland. The runoff is different because you've got evapotranspiration with trees, and you've got a, a lot of, perhaps a thirty percent amount of rainfall. It never sees the ground with a forested area, and that isn't the same with the meadow. So there is a difference. I haven't brought the documentation here, but you can look into it, and perhaps I'll look into it before the next meeting as well. But the key is how well the meadow is done. If the meadow is done well and it's documented, it could be treating a lot of water, and the runoff from it, because it always will have runoff, will be clearer. And that's the key, because the water will always run off here.
Thank you.
And you mentioned the applicant might have a question for me?
Well, I was just wondering if he was going to answer your questions.
There you go.
If you can remember.
John, before you, before you leave, if your concerns are not addressed on the final plan, I hope you'll bring this back up at the, at that meeting.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So there were a lot of questions, I guess, and, and issues brought up in that. I think the, where, the first question was if, if we should have named a receiving water body, I think, for, for stormwater flows off the site. And I might, I'm going to bring in Katie probably pretty quickly on some of these stormwater-related questions, but there is no, we wouldn't expect any surface overland flows to make it to any open receiving water body. There's no streams, there's no ponds proximate to the site, so all water would be infiltrated and not, basically, leave the site on, in terms of groundwater. There are just no, there is no open, open water body that would receive water from the, from the site. That's the question that was asked. So there, there's that, I guess. And then, yes, I mean, there is a difference between a forest cover and a meadow cover. Folks may be familiar with, you know, DEP doesn't consider the panels impervious surfaces, and the entire site will be a grassed surface post-construction. And the, the project will absolutely meet chapter five hundred stormwater standards. The, the meadow surface is considered an adequate vegetated surface to collect and treat stormwater runoff. And in addition to just the meadow that will be there, that's why we also propose these specific buffer areas that need, that, that groundwater, I'm sorry, surface water flows are directed to, and they have to be deed restricted and maintained for, in perpetuity while the project is there. So that's all kind of according to chapter five hundred and according to DEP's expectations. And our, the, the stormwater memorandum that we submitted, I know folks haven't, not, not everyone has seen that yet, but that gives them a very great detail on this exact subject. And the, and the calculations, the hydro cad calculations demonstrate that the site will adequately treat stormwater runoff on-site, and no adjacent properties would be impacted. So I'll kind of leave it at that. Katie, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I don't, I don't have a lot to add. I mean, you raised a good point about, sorry, about the site needing to be re-vegetated as a meadow. And we will use erosion controls to make sure that the site gets re-established. And like Sean mentioned, DEP does consider the, the area under the panels to be self-treating when it's re-vegetated as a meadow, and you're not allowed to mow the meadow more than twice per year to maintain the, the treatment. And for the access roads and the concrete equipment pads, which are impervious areas, we have, like Sean mentioned, deed-restricted buffers that will treat the runoff from those areas. So.
Yeah, thank you. And that's a really good point that I should have mentioned is that a big part of this that DEP requires is that you can only go in there and mow twice a year, that's it. So it's not a golf course. I mean, that area is, the, the vegetation under the panels is supposed to be allowed to grow, reaches a. reach a sufficient height for that exact purpose, to provide better stormwater treatment and collection of stormwater. That's something that all solar projects we've worked on have to comply with, that they can only mow the surface under the panels twice a year.
I guess, and you said there's no body of water flowing off the property. But now, I mean, on the site plan, in between the, you know, you kind of have the solar panels broken up into three pieces, and the crosshairs, because you basically don't have any index on the site plan. So these areas here are wetlands.
Correct.
So, and at least one of the, two of them, I mean, go off the property, and it looks like the property slopes from the road down towards the back of the property, towards Santillo's. Am I correct? So basically, I mean, in the front half of the solar panels, water will go towards those wetlands, and some of the, I mean, not in cheats, but eventually work its way towards the wetland.
Yeah, and that's what we would want.
And eventually work its way off the property. I guess, I think that's what we're concerned, I think that's what Mr. Whedon is concerned about, too, is although Branch Lake may be however far away it is, you know, water eventually gets to Branch Lake.
Yes, there are significant vegetated wetland areas on the property. They're forested. Portions of those forested wetlands will be cleared. They will not, they will still be, they will remain wetlands, and this is how DEP and the Corps reviews it. You're converting it from a forested wetland type to an emergent wetland type. And we've also, I don't have a plan that could come over, and I don't know if it's apparent, but that we are also, to the extent that we can, not cutting in that major wetland system in the center of the site. We had to clear a portion of it to prevent shading of panels, but there's an area in the central portion of the largest wetland that we're not cutting and not touching at all. And that was specifically to limit as much impact to wetlands that we could, and leave trees as much as we could. So I guess the point is, is that we certainly, to the extent that we can, not touch wetlands, and when we've had to, we've limited it to just changing a vegetation type. And in the areas where we had the opportunity to not touch the wetland at all and not cut trees at all, we've done that, within the constraints of the shading, the clearing that we had to do to prevent shading.
Sean, can I just add?
Yes.
Just, I may be, I'm not, Katie and Sean are more the experts on this, but I think the question is more whether there's actual surface water running from the wetlands off to another water body. And that's, I don't think that's the case.
That's right. And I just, I guess, just to add something. So from a stormwater point of view, you look at two things, really. You look at water quality and you look at water quantity. And we are adhering to the state regulations for both of those. Water quality with the vegetated buffers, and then water quantity, we did a pre and post-development drainage analysis to make sure that we're not increasing runoff from the site to adjacent properties. And that's why you see that we have a couple of stormwater basins on the plan, because we needed to provide some additional storage to make sure that we're matching runoff in the post-condition and the precondition. So I think, you know, we're satisfying the state's requirements for both of those areas, and I'm happy to address any other concerns, I guess, but...
And is that information in the storm, in the three copies of the stormwater that you submitted?
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think you may have said that there was, is there an updated site plan that actually has an index? I know that's not the right word. Legend?
There's a legend in general notes. Yeah, it's at the beginning of the set.
It's not on C-2.0?
It's C-1.0, I believe.
You kept saying that. Stormwater, the state requirements. Will you claim that they may be the requirements as well?
I should have said that.
Yes, I wanted to get that. I have not yet closed the public hearing. Is last chance, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing, hearing, none, I close the public hearing. So, planning board, what would the board like to do? Speaking to the board as an entity.
I'll move that, the application for the major site development entitled Ellsworth End E Solar LLC be accepted?
As complete?
As complete.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Let me just ask Elena again. You mentioned that all the incompletes on here, you've gotten some information, you consider these to be minor.
Yeah, I think it's substantially, I'm comfortable with that motion.
You're comfortable or not comfortable?
I'm comfortable with the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to comment that if these things are not on the final, the final's in trouble. All those in favor, please? Hi. I got two minutes. Thank you very much. I hope it wasn't too debilitating.
No, no, we appreciate getting the board and the public's feedback. And, you know, I should also say that Elena and Thomas have been very helpful up to this point, and we certainly anticipate continuing to work through these remaining details with them.
So when you fill out the evaluation form, you're going to give us a good marks for custom services?
That's why these guys have the six bucks.
I sure hope so.
Thank you.
So we, yeah, we look forward to the next hearing, and by then, we expect to have addressed the remaining concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Chairman, thanks.
Yes?
Did your copy of the agenda say that the next one is a sketch plan?
Yes, it does.
Good.
It's supposed to be a sketch plan.
Yeah, they, it got downgraded, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, let's see. Who is an aspect, and I mean applicant?
Oh, my goodness.
This is sketch plan review for a major use site development entitled BD Solar Ellsworth for BD Solar Ellsworth LLC. The proposal is construct a 3.3-megawatt solar energy facility on a 95-acre parcel, tax map 93 Lot 2, located on the Nicolin Road. The subject property is located in the rural and residential, rural and resource protection zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please? While you're coming up, let me just say that a sketch plan review has no conclusion. That is, we're not looking to find an applicant complete or the information good. This is more a feedback between the board and the applicant to get information from each other prior to the actual application. So, yes, go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Thies with Haley Ward representing the applicant tonight. As you noted, we originally submitted an application for preliminary review, and based on our TRT meeting comments and changes that we had to make to our plan, we revised this as a sketch plan, so we could still come review the project with the board and get some feedback. We did, between the deadline for TRT submission and tonight's meeting, we were able to prepare an updated sketch plan, if you will. And I was asked to bring nine copies of that to the board tonight, so I have those with me if I could bring those up.
Yes. So, yeah. Remember doing this, Mark, remember doing this in school, take one and pass the rest? So you've prepared us for life.
Yep. So the proposed project is a 3.3-megawatt project on approximately 17 acres of a 95-acre parcel on Nicolin Road. The plan, the site is existing wooded. It's just past a transmission corridor that crosses the road there, if you're familiar with the area. As you're going down the road, you pass the transmission corridor, and it's on the right-hand side, a wooded parcel. And there's no immediate neighbors around the project site, either across the road or on either side. We're surrounded with our proposed development with wetlands to the, wetlands to the west and on the, to the easterly boundary or the easterly area of our site or project, there's a stream that cuts through there. So we had to modify the design from what you initially received to, I guess, one, stay out of the resource protection zone that's associated with the stream. And we were also asked to extend the access road to go all the way back to the very back of the solar project area for full access for the fire department. So those changes required us to reconfigure the layout to what you see now. We've moved any panels outside of the resource protection zone. The site got a little bit skinnier, but longer, deeper into the property. And we've extended the road with hammerhead turnaround at the end. Based on discussions with the fire inspector, essentially, the road from where we accessed the site to where we previously ended it, we kept that at 20 feet, 20-foot width. From that point to the back of the site, we were able to reduce that to a 12-foot wide road. But then the turnaround at the very end, I think it's a little bit wider to accommodate all the truck movements, to be able to turn around there. Similar to probably all the other solar projects that you reviewed and the one just prior to this, it'll be all re-vegetated meadow surface enclosed in a chain link fence. There's no lighting associated with the project, no signage, other than just emergency contact information and keep-out-type protection signage, but no advertising-type signage. We'll have to prepare, originally, we did not include stormwater calculations, because we were under the threshold for amount of impervious area. The extension of the road put us over that threshold, so that was another issue that we needed to address, that we didn't have time to address after the TRT meeting, but that will be included in our preliminary submission.
I'll turn the loose on you.
Okay, bring it on.
Any questions, comments from the board, please?
Oh, of course. The road that you show going into the project, is that pretty much where, is a wood harvesting operation going on now, correct, on this project?
There is. Yeah, I visited the site before the TRT meeting and noticed that they were out there harvesting wood. I don't know if any sort of access road that they've built for harvesting is the same location as what we've proposed here. More than likely, it's not. We didn't base our location on anything that they had created for harvesting the wood.
Okay. Just curious, and I don't know if it's in here and I missed it, but, I mean, how many panels do you anticipate having?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. My guess would be somewhere around 10,000.
Minor issue, on the application document itself, on page two, under development information, four is development information. Subsection C, what is the estimated cost of the proposed development or changes? You kind of have that listed down below under line F, which asks for estimated costs of public infrastructure improvements. You have $4.1 million listed. It should be up on line C. And we talked about the fencing going around, and you obviously heard the comments about the fencing being raised. Is that something you're amenable to doing?
Yeah, there's no, there's no real additional cost associated with raising the fence. We've done other sites, I think, similar to what they mentioned, at six inches. I'd have to check to see. I think code is a little bit vague as far as what is necessary allowable. I think it has to just restrict access. So I guess the question then becomes, at what point is too high that somebody can't crawl underneath it? We had, I know at one point, we had a request from IFNW on a different project where they suggested 18 inches. I don't think that would meet code. I think it'd be pretty easy for somebody to crawl under an 18-inch gap. Whether 12 inches would be acceptable, I don't know, but we can look into that.
Well, not with the crocodiles at the other side, doesn't it?
I guess in section appendix B, basically the financial capability letter from BNRG Renewables, and this letter is dated November 8, 2018. I would kind of consider that a little old. Maybe I wouldn't mind seeing something more up-to-date, and not just this letter with a new date on it.
Computer files are for, right?
I think, and Tom, this is addressed to you, and some of the, and I don't think we brought it up specifically to the other folks, but in section appendix E, has to do with logging inspections during construction, and then there's also BMP inspection log. I believe it was on the Gilpatrick solar farm, we asked about, I think at that time Dwight said he wouldn't mind the city having these logs. I mean, is that something you're interested in?
Yeah, we can keep a file in the office on it.
Okay. Then maybe we should remember to bring that back up to AWOL property folks. But, I mean, is that something that you're okay doing?
Yeah, we can provide copies. I believe that's limited. So this, this project is a little bit different than the previous, mainly size and the, and then therefore the permitting requirements. This project's not required to have a site law permit with DEP. We are going to have a stormwater permit by rule. So some of the reporting and recording, inspection requirements are different. Throughout the construction process, it's all the same. It's really post-construction, long-term inspections are a little bit different in what those recordings are. But anything that we do, do for inspections, it'd be fine to provide logs to the left of the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I do have one. It tapers from a 20-foot driveway to a 12, and you're good with that, far guy?
Well, I'm gonna, I just got, I just seen these plans, so I'm gonna review it and talk to Haley Ward and stuff like that, because I want to know what the distance from the 12 to the back, because the original plan we had was, is just shortly after the turnaround, we asked them to extend it to the end of the fence, and it was like 250 feet, I believe. And then now, we reconfigured it to where now it's even longer to...
It would seem.
Yeah. So I want to have change to, actually get the ruler out and actually see what the actual distance is and stuff.
And the silt fence is a permanent thing, then, here?
No, the silt fence is in place, well, during construction and essentially until vegetation is established on the site, so that there's no longer erosion concern.
Is it removed, then?
And then it's removed. And more than likely, if we label it as silt fence, there's an option of whether it's silt fence, or it's a essentially ground wood material when they clear it and grind up the stumps. They can build a berm, build a berm with that in place of the silt fence. They both are to serve the same purpose.
And the silt fence is required on all sides? It seems to me like it might not run off all sides.
In this case, in this case, most likely it is, because there's sort of a ridge down, sort of the center, where you have an access road. One side slopes off to the wetlands, and the other side slopes off towards that stream that's down the slope there.
Gotcha. Sort of. Sort of. Okay. Better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it, I suppose.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this matter? Man at the back there, first.
Yeah.
And state your name for the record, please.
My camera, landowner next to this property. Again, first time here, so apologize, but I've obviously heard some concerning things already about the fence going underneath. The water runoff is very concerning to me because there is a beaver pond right there and there's a tremendous amount of water that runs off in that area. And the fire department's been there because I've been across that road, it's washed out three or four times. So there's a tremendous amount runoff before this thing gets cleared off and they put grass underneath it. And then it runs into Green Lake on the backside of Boggy Brook. I'd also like to know, as landowner, if I could, you know, with the technology that we have nowadays, is there a way to say what 10,000 panels looks like on a colon road when, right when it was trees two or three weeks ago? And now it's going to be 10,000 panels. When I kind of sit on a ridge that would overlook this and they say that there's no landowners that would see that, I certainly look over that ridge and wonder what my environment would look like with this going on. My second thing is, is that how can I stay involved in this process? Because, you know, some committee comes and sits with, you know, the towns and you guys, but it's, you know, where's this the foregone conclusion where I don't get input as a landowner when two weeks ago, I got something that said, hey, you might want to be interested in this. Is the train so far down the track that I don't get a chance to weigh in on this? Because I think it's a significant change in that environment and there's a lot of things to consider. The 12-inch, 18-inch is a great one. There's rabbits there, there's beavers there, there's projects that run through there. I've hunted through there for the last 20 years that we've gone through that piece of property. And to all of a sudden say, we're gonna dump this in there, what's my repercussions? I mean, I know that they're putting them in, I live, I work in Newport, they're putting them in Palmyra, they've taken away fields. Maybe a different idea because they're already there. You know, the fields are already there, there's that infrastructure, that the water company's talking about that's been there. This is, they're gonna deforest the whole thing and then put grass underneath it and hope the erosion doesn't drain into the water shafts that there. And I'd love to be able to see what this is gonna look like. I would think we'd all want to see what that looks like, because the colon road is completely different. If you've been driving down it for the last 20, 30 years, like my father-in-law has and I've been, what's this gonna really look like? And how are we gonna control? Great point. How many of these are we gonna put in before the watershed changes for Green Lake and Branch Lake? I'm really glad that you brought that up, because this is our water and we get it one time. And I'll tell you what, the Newport Water Department, just for, just comparison process for New Comas Pond, they, nothing happens around that body of water, because it's the water source in town Newport. I would think the exact same thing happens for Green Lake and Branch Lake.
Thank you.
I do have a lot of questions, because I don't know how this process works and I want to be involved in it.
Before you sit down, the stormwater ordinance has a requirement that there be no more water flowing off a property after development than it was before. So that is a hurdle they have to jump over. The other is, there are at least two more meetings. The preliminary where we look at the application, as we did the earlier one, to make sure all the material is available. And then the final plan where we actually go over the value of that information and either approve or disapprove. Certainly, keep coming to those. You can always check in with the planning office to find out what's going on. And you may approach the applicant to see if they will work with you and keep you informed and have an ongoing exchange of information.
Yeah.
That's not something that we can mandate, but, you know.
Is the applicant the landowner or the company that they work?
I would suggest the company that's doing the development, but that's simply my suggestion. And thank you for coming and then talking to us.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Sean, just to kind of follow up this gentleman's questions. You know, is there something that you can either generate or either through pictures or a representation of what the solar farm would look like? I think what he's interested in, what it looks like as you drive down the road, you know, looking into that lot. And also, you know, if they're gonna be able to see the solar panels from their property. We had one solar farm that they actually provided pictures from Branch Lake. I just wonder, and people do marvelous things now with drones, you know, if the homeowner is amenable to somebody from their company going out there with a drone and, you know, kind of taking a picture towards where you're gonna develop. I mean, that may answer his question of, you know, will I see these solar panels from my house? Just food for thought.
Yeah, so what we've done on some other projects, I have to find out where his actually house is. We can look at what the elevation is at his house compared to the elevation of the site, what's between there as far as tree growth, approximate how high those trees are, to get a sense of what that line of sight would be. Essentially, I mean, so say they have a two-story building or two-story house, what's the approximate view from a second-story window or something like that to look out there? We've done that. As far as from the road, so we have a 30-foot buffer along the road frontage that we have to maintain wooded. If that gets cleared at this point, we'll have to go back in and revegetate it. I don't know what the harvesting plans are for, what the landowner's doing out there right now. But we'll have to establish a buffer along the road for screening for what you'd see from the road.
And actually, though, from your contours, that from the road, your property pitches down, so, you know, from the road...
Right, so I don't think you'll see much from the road, I mean, obviously, except for where the entrance road goes in. But it's possible, depending on where a house is located and elevation differences, that maybe you could see something. We can look at that.
Thank you.
Now, there were other hands that were up. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dale Jellison. I'm here focusing on the potential impacts to Green Lake, where the impact of this site on Boggy Brook, which should be on your map, hopefully labeled as such. My concern starts with the construction. I did not realize until tonight that this was going to be a permit by rule, and I don't know if the permit by rule DEP considerations concerning stormwater are as stringent as a full-blown development that the previous applicant discussed. So I'm not aware of any differences there. You mentioned that stormwater before and after development has to be the same. I'm not 100% sure that that's correct in permit by rule. Needs to be reviewed.
Well, let me say that if Ellsworth's requirements are more stringent, it will meet Ellsworth's requirements. The permit by rule is a process that is separate from the planning board review.
My, going further into my construction concerning erosion control is whether there's going to be a requirement or is something shown for a detention or a retention pond on the site. Again, to alleviate, avoid at all costs, any runoff that's going to get to Boggy Brook, which will get to Green Lake. And if there is a detention or a retention pond, what are the maintenance requirements? If it fills up during the first couple of years of development with sediment, siltation, whatnot, are they required to muck it out? And where does that material go, again, protecting Green Lake? Hopefully, again, the construction would employ the best management practices. You've talked about the erosion control fence or the wood chip barrier. I've got experience with both of those, and as long as it's properly installed and maintained during the construction, it should do the job. In the final design, again, hopefully there are final plans for, again, protecting runoff from the site. The final thing that I wanted to bring up is, and it would probably pertain to all solar arrays, is how does the city of Ellsworth mandate decommissioning? And who's financially responsible for decommissioning of a site? And who's responsible for the disposal of those materials into a landfill? Is it totally the cost of the developer? Or has he gone, by the way, has declared bankruptcy and the city of Ellsworth is now responsible for those thousands of panels that really don't decompose, they just take up space in a landfill? I have received in the mail several times in the past month or so, an offer to buy shares in solar panel farms. Are these projects in general, and this one specifically, viable if people don't buy these shares of these solar projects? It's something to think about. It might be a rhetorical question, but I just wonder, with as many as are going in, is everybody going to buy these shares? And is that required to make them financially viable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale, let me answer your question about the decommissioning plan. That is part of our ordinance, and it's the developer's responsibility to put up a bond, to put up, they come up with an estimated cost of disposal, recycling. It's normally done at the 20-year mark, and it's adjusted normally over every five years. So in the application, there'll be a breakdown of how much it costs for each line item, and it's the developer's responsibility. That's one thing we stressed when we did the ordinance, that none of those costs are gonna come back on the taxpayers.
That's great.
So I just wanted to answer that question for you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, please come up.
My name is Audrey Tunny. I'm the current president of the Green Lake Association. And I have two questions. One is for the developer and one is for the planning department. My first question, actually, I learned a little something here by the previous presentation, that there are some solar farms or solar facilities that involve toxic chemicals. The previous applicant said theirs contain none. I'd like to know if there are toxic chemicals that are a part of this project.
No.
And the question, thank you. The question for the planning department is, how available are these plans to the public? In other words, we have in a butter that, even myself, how do we get, how do we get to see these?
So as soon as you've received an a butter's notice, we have everything that's been submitted and put on the agenda in our office that can be seen publicly. So anybody can come into City Hall.
And ask?
And often, we can also send them by email at request.
Okay. So just as the president of the Lake Association, I'd like to see what's happening. So I would just ask for an email copy?
Yes.
Super. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Joe Kitchen, and I'm a resident of Harmony Way, which is off Nicole and Road. And I've tried to do as much research as I can or could, was able to get, because this thing, all of a sudden, bang, it's here, you know? It was on the 15th of July, I believe, that the application was put in. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So that didn't give us as much time to get our beans in a row here, but I did find an interesting article. And it's, anything can go wrong on a solar farm. Perimeter fence damage, people that want to get in there to steal stuff, damage, injuries, and what regular inspections would they be doing on the fencing to make sure that it isn't damaged? Ground erosion. If you look up solar array, they'll, they give you a brief description of what a solar array is, but the next sentence is erosion. And I feel that this is gonna be a great detriment to Green Lake. And I don't, John Cullen from the DEP, they probably are well aware of the situation, but where this is located, it's surrounded by, on three sides, by wetlands. And it's high. Water runs, of course, downhill. And I hope that the city of Ellsworth could take time to really look at this proposal and not jump in right to the neck before they find out exactly what's gonna happen here. 20 years down the road, it's gonna be, take it down. The clear cut, I see one on Newport on Route 2 that was in a field, big field. There's a proposal for 175-acre solar, I don't want to say farm, because they don't really grow anything, but solar array. And it's 175 acres on Route 178 in Edington. I've lived here for pretty near 35 years, and I just hate to think that I'm gonna have to drive by a place that, to me, it's an eyesore and a blight on our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Last chance before I close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed.
John, come back up to the lectern.
Yes.
Come on up, John.
This one?
Yes.
There's several of us around.
I mean, okay, so, I mean, you basically deal with Branch Lake, but I think you also venture down to Green Lake, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, indeed, indeed. They're identical lakes in close proximity, and the city does care much about both.
Okay. So I would like to involve you also in this discussion on Green Lake. I mean, you're the lake expert, so to speak. You know, involved in whatever capacity you feel you should be involved in. I was about the drinking water, but it is an important lake to Ellsworth.
Well, luckily, physics is physics. It doesn't really change much. And gravity, so far, has been equally effective on Green Lake watersheds and Branch Lake watersheds. Keep in mind, and again, my view is, and the view of the main DEP, that every piece, every square foot of land in the state of Maine is in a watershed of one sort or another, despite what you heard tonight. It flows somewhere. And it flows into the nearest river, or it flows into the nearest lake, or it flows into the ocean eventually. And in a perfect world, you might have some suspended small pockets that are completely, they percolate into the ground right where they are. But they don't usually extend to a very large, very large area. So as far as this, I've never hiked this location, but I see it frequently. And it is, it is surrounded by wetlands. They are water bodies that then flow into Green Lake or other water bodies. Everything, everything flows eventually, especially with the 100-year storms that we've been having about every year. So the concept is, what you should think about is, the same armoring for this is any other appreciable construction feature, to enable the water that falls on the land, and it will, to be clear when it flows off. It may not all percolate into the land. If you've been conscious the last few years, you've seen a lot of flowage off every square foot of land in the city of Ellsworth. And it all goes somewhere, and it might as well be clear as possible. It is going to go, and it should be clear. It is going to go, and it, and it should be clear. The way we get that clear is buffers and stormwater treatment. It can be built stormwater treatment, whether it's a retention pond with a weir that it then overflows with clean water, and the silt settles at the bottom. Or it could be a vegetative buffer. In a perfect world, vegetative buffers are best, because they're, they're the trees, the forest you've seen for the last 10,000 years. They really work. And my, my advice would be the same. And I'll have a specific advice on Green, on Branch Lake, but the general advice for Green Lake is the same as the specific advice for Branch Lake. It's all about runoff. Water will run off. Will it be clear, or will it not be clear? The best management practices that are employed can really do a wonderful job at keeping that water clear. But they have to be employed, and it's wise to have them documented.
Well, I wouldn't mind going forward, if you keep in touch with Sean, I believe it is, is it Sean?
Yes.
And educate yourself on this project. I wouldn't mind having you report back to us at the preliminary. If there's any concerns, some of the landowners in the area, the neighbors are, you know, concerned about specific, especially dealing with stormwater, I'd just like to have you educate us.
I can definitely educate myself, I can guarantee that. Thank you, I'll get together and meet. And then, in the future, whatever the city wishes me to do as far as info regarding the same kind of watershed protections that we do on Branch, for the other water bodies in town, it's all good.
I have one question. Yes. Go ahead.
Do you want to do something else?
Go ask a question. Ask him a question. Okay, the prior applicant, the other solar farm, they were doing a comprehensive hydrological study, or have already done one, allegedly, okay, which I believe you. You know, whatever. My question is, can we require the new applicant to do the same level of comprehensive analysis?
So, I think what Mr. Thieb said at the very beginning was that extending, because of how they've had to reconfigure the layout of the whole site, just the impervious surface of the roadway has pushed them over our 20,000-square-foot impervious surface threshold at which that is required. So, I think I heard that correctly, he can probably confirm. I think especially if, depending on the width of the road, as we discussed, that would impact it too. But we did have, you know, there's been a few other projects like this, I've looked back at some of what the board has already approved, where they're under the size that would require state review, and under the 20,000, 20,000 square feet of impervious surface, like, very obvious through a road and the concrete footings for the modules and everything. But we did have a discussion around the TRT process about what is the imperviousness of a solar panel? And I understand that DEP considers that invisible. I think our ordinance language, like some other times, is somewhat ambiguous, but at least that road impervious surface threshold seems that it will be hit with the proposed project, which will require the flooding control, the full study, all of that.
So that's a yes?
Yeah, well, the way you asked it.
It's a qualified yes.
Yeah.
So like a yes to me.
The way, yeah, he said, can we require it? Well, it's going to be required, because it's required.
Cool. That would be a yes then, right? Okay. Anyone? I mean, that's good to know, and we'll look forward to seeing that, you know, it's voluminous glory.
Yes.
Anyone else from the board? Applicant, do you have any more, any questions of us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, this application, the session tonight, requires no action from the board. And in fact, we can't take any action, so that's it for this item. And everyone is welcome to stay for the next item. I don't want you to feel that you have to leave. And that next item is... This is a preliminary plan review for a major use site development and major subdivision titled 64 Pine Street for Opus One LLC. The proposal is to construct a 12-unit residential apartment building on 23.7 acres, tax map 134, lots 91 and 104, located at 64 Pine Street and 33 Spruce Street. All the subject property is located in the downtown zone. Is, the applicant appears to be here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, John Bates, and I think you're representing me over there.
I'm here to represent Mr. Bates tonight as well.
A man of several hats. There's no debate then. Sorry. These things happen. So, tell us about this.
Okay. So what's proposed is a 12-unit apartment building, three stories tall. It's located between Spruce Street and Pine Street, so there's frontage on both streets. Main access to the site is from Spruce Street, so that's where the parking lot will be to the facility. The site currently, or previously had two residential structures on it that have since been demolished. So as you can see on your plan, the building essentially fronts on Pine Street, right up close to the property line there, with the parking lot behind it. Utility access is all from Pine Street, and other than storm drain, the parking lot all slopes towards Spruce Street and is collected there. Based on comments from city, it's all collected in a storm drain system, and they asked us to pipe that down Spruce Street and tie into an existing basin to try and help solve some existing water and icing issues on the street there. So we've, we've included that in the design plan. There was also a lot of discussion about a possible storm drain line that cuts through this property, based on some rather old plans that the city has in file. There wasn't any, that was never noticed when the buildings were torn down or the foundation was filled in, so nobody, I guess, was really sure if the, if it exists. But we did have discussions with the city about when site work is done, potentially looking for that, and if it is found, make some changes to the storm drain, work with the city to try and capture that, or see what condition that pipe's in, to help solve some other issues that the city has experienced.
Dale, I'm not, just let me interrupt. Isn't that, we're on the drawing, you have approximate location of city storm drain pipe, and it actually goes under?
It went under one of the, under one of the previous houses that were on the site.
And also goes under Sergeant Real Estate?
Correct.
Possibly?
Yes.
But nobody knows for sure.
That's, if we were to discover it, we agreed to give the city access to it, and yeah, no one knows. I mean, maybe Elena, you want to chime in there?
Yeah, so that, that approximate location that they added was a result of, I think, like a 1956 map that we had digitized. So, that's where the suspicion comes from, in addition to the fact that there's water seeping, sort of from that area, and icing occurring in the winter.
So, wait, that's, it could be a pipe drain, I suppose.
Yeah. Right. So the Public Works Director is the one who brought it up, and, you know, so it remains to be seen, if it is seen at all, but they are still treating it better than what was existing.
Okay.
Yeah, and as Elena just mentioned, we are providing stormwater treatment for a little bit of increase that we have in impervious area. I think it's a little over 1,000 square feet increase from what was previously on the properties. We do have one parking space that comes off of Pine Streets, our ADA handicap parking space, because the, the entrance to the building on Pine Street is the ADA access to the building. And based on some, some of the discussions that, that we had from the TRT meeting, and then I think even the post comments, we have made one change to that sort of configuration of the ADA parking space. I brought more copies of the plan with me tonight that I can share if the board wants them. Essentially, we've, we've flopped the, what's designated as the parking space, and what's designated as the loading zone for the parking space. So switched those around and changed the dumpster, so it's, we're not proposing a traditional dumpster, if you will, for trash removal. It would be an enclosure, but it would be smaller wheeled, wheeled-type containers within that enclosure, so then those can be brought out, so that the trash truck doesn't need to access the dumpster pad itself. The trash truck can stop, they can wheel the, those barrels out to the truck and empty them that way. So that was able to shift that around, work better with that, that handicap parking, and there's, there was a conflict the way we had it before with an existing utility pole in that area that we were trying to avoid needing to move. There's a lot of equipment and things on that pole, so that was one change that we made, based on the last round of comments that I think were in your packet, is something that needed to be addressed from the TRT meeting. Other than that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, board, have Adam. John, I always go first, so.
No. I'm kind of, I guess, kind of still stumped about the possible stormwater line. And if the city has thought anything, I mean, if, if there's a line that currently goes under Sergeant Real Estate, and goes under this parking lot, which I assume will be paved, it's obviously not Mr. Bates' fault that it's there. But how do you propose that?
Well, so...
You know, if, if something happens with it, you know?
That's the beauty of growing older, again, being an older community and now seeing some infill development, so you start to uncover these things and have time, you know, opportunities to fix them. Like, probably the state, maybe the city, whatever the relationship of High Street was at that time, said, oh, just send it that way, downhill, and there it went, and now here we are. I think it's a very approximate location, because we're going from like a 1956 map to a digitized map, to sending that in a PDF to the, so it's not like even, we don't have like an easement or something describing this location, so...
There's no guarantee that it actually even is there.
Yeah, it's kind of a suspicion.
Right. So, in our discussion at TRT, I think we agreed that when we're in there installing the parking lot, clearly we have to disrupt things. We might as well try and dig down and find it. Would be my, right? I mean, that would be the best approach.
So if they find it, hopefully they'll tell us, and...
Give them access per our parking lot.
They're just going to fill it up.
Yeah.
I don't think that would work out well for it.
I mean, if that storm drain went to hell, I mean, it's...
And likely that's the case.
I mean, it's nothing that you're tying into, correct?
No, no, no.
Even if you find it.
No.
So it kind of sounds like finding it is more of an interest of the city and the state, to, you've got a chance to do it now.
Correct.
Seize upon that.
Right.
Chance.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. Now's the time, we're going to be there, now's the time to try and discover it if it, in effect, is there.
And what, what you would have to do is just simply provide access to somebody else to fix it.
Absolutely.
You're not going to be required to fix it down a line.
Correct.
I mean, it's going to be those people, or the state, or some company.
If, if it's even there.
Right, if it's even there.
Right.
And if it can be intercepted there, what was suggested is maybe there's a way to add a catch basin to the parking lot that handles, like, if there, if there is flow coming on to the property, it could be stopped there and properly direct, properly directed to the, actually, brand-new system on Spruce Street, because it was just redone last summer.
Yeah, I think, so I think the intention was, during construction, we'll see if we can find it. If we find it and realize that it's there, let the city know.
Go to plan.
The city would then, most likely, come in.
Come up with a plan.
Somehow work with, whether it's John's contractor, or the city could replace the section. I would, I would think we would look at installing a new pipe, connecting on the uphill side of the property, and tying that into sort of that storm drain that we're proposing to go down the road, somehow coming up with a design to tie that in, so it could all be continued along.
But this, this is your land right now, right?
Correct.
And you are the owner.
Yes, sir.
So, there's nothing in the deed or whatever that speaks to an easement.
Nothing.
So if you discover this mystery pipe under there, and I, and I get that old cities have these things everywhere.
Sure.
Okay? You know, do you kind of post hoc do an easement then? Or, I mean, how does that go into the deed and all that, the property?
Question.
Great question. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, clearly, we want to make it right with whatever's underneath there. And it's not our obligation, however we feel that it's the best thing to do.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not suggesting that you, you got, well, I'm not suggesting that you guys pay for anything.
Yeah.
But the, but the thing is that, if there is something there and you decide to leave it there.
Sure.
You know, the city has to have access to that, there has to be an easement for them to be able to do that.
Agreed.
My question is, how can that be handled? Or can that be handled, or, or don't I worry about it?
I would say most likely, if it's determined that it's there, and then come up with a fix for it, after it's fixed, the, the city would most likely have an eas, we'd be able to say, all right, you have an easement here.
Okay. And so that would be recorded in some way. I mean, down the line, because the thing is, if you sell this puppy down the line.
Sure.
You know, you, and now it's like, oh, yeah, by the way, after you take, do the money, it's like, you get, you get a special pursuit down there.
Yeah.
So my point is that, that passing it on, there would in fact need to be an easement.
Yeah, I agree, so I'm recording, yeah.
That's legally binding.
Yeah, I agree.
And so then it will become between the city and the applicant to design a memorial to the old pipe, if it exists.
I don't want my name on that pipe, if that's what you're asking.
Honestly, my, so my old planning office, we had a piece of old water pipe that was wood, just a cross-section, so if we found that...
Well, I, I would highly suspect whatever we find is completely deteriorated. Would be my, would be my best guess. However...
That sounds like wishful thinking, but what the hell?
Yeah. I mean, however, we're perfectly willing to make whatever was put in place years ago right, as to the best of our ability.
Well, so what I hear you saying, though, is you're willing to work all this out as this emerges, if in fact it's found.
Correct.
And I'm good, I'm personally good with that.
Yeah.
Elena, you know that the pipe is made of unobtanium, right?
Unobtanium. We'll find out. If we can't find it, it doesn't matter.
Can we ask other questions? Yeah, okay.
Hey, I'm not, I'm not done yet.
I'm sorry. Oh, no, you relinquished your chance.
You jumped in on top.
The light of fire here. Jesus. Okay. Sorry.
But I mean, he would be tying into a stormwater line down Spruce Street, is that correct?
Yeah.
Was it, I don't recall, was there something, anything in the literature that said that was, is that a good line?
Yeah, that's the one that's, so, that was all put in last year.
Okay. Could you explain a little the grass underdrained soil filter? That, is it just like a little?
It's a depressed area in the corner there to collect the water for it to filter down through.
So it's like a little detention basin of sorts?
Sort of. It's more for, in this instance, it's more for stormwater treatment than it is detention, but it does provide detention as well.
Because it's rather shallow for detention.
Yeah, it's like, most likely it's 12 to 18 inches deep, and it, it only holds water when you have a storm, it filters down through, and then it's just dry the rest of the...
So that's nothing that's going to be hooked into this stormwater drain?
Well, that, I believe that's where the basin is. Originally, we had to, we were collecting it there, and then it spilled over, because right now the water all sheds out onto the road. So we were collecting it, it was, any overflow would go out of that, to the road, and that's when the discussion came up about, let's not spill it, let it continue to go into the road, let's pipe it down the road and tie into the new storm drain system, or the storm drain system that the city put in last year.
Yeah, Elena, I happened to stop by this lot today, the entrance off Spruce Street. And the driveway that's there now, is that basically where the driveway coming out of the parking lot is going to be?
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
I mean, I, we had a site visit on his apartments over on Washington Street. You know, this is, I wouldn't mind having a site... You know, this is, I wouldn't mind having a site visit on, on this one, just because John doesn't apparently like to build on level lots.
Well, there's not much left in the city.
I mean, it just kind of, it kind of gives a better idea of how everything fits together.
Yeah, I agree. No, I'm, yeah, I agree with that. The, the building itself, where the building is proposed is really level and then, you know, fortunately, the parking lot is lower than that. And then naturally just kind of, you know, has drainage down towards the street in elevation. So it actually lends itself to a pretty good parking lot and a pretty good spot for a building. So much different than Washington Street like you're referring to, which was very challenging, but we accepted the challenge.
Yeah. Any indication, I mean, the driveway that comes out on Spruce Street, it's a lot closer to High Street. Once you get over there to the, to the driveway, it's like, gee, High Street's right there. Any, do you foresee any problem? People will learn probably during the winter not to take a right out of the parking lot. I just think that.
To go onto High Street?
Yeah. I mean, you know, if the road's snowy or something.
Oh, you mean because of the incline?
Yeah.
Likely that may be the case, depends on how well the city maintained, road is maintained, I guess.
Okay.
That would be how I would choose.
This is a, this is a low generator. I mean, it's only 12, you know.
Yeah, I know.
At the same, at the same time, though.
Yeah.
You know, left turns off a High Street onto this street and left turns from this street to High Street.
Yep.
I mean, that's really problematic.
Sure, yeah, I'd be inclined to take a left.
Going out especially because you're on grade and all.
Sure.
So my, I guess my question is, you know, we could, I mean, I think under the ordinance, we could basically say, you know, you have to do some sort of analysis of the downstream intersection, but I'm not sure what it gets you. But I, but I, it's a concern, it would be neat if you could come up with some way to, to make that work better, whether it's restricting, you know, turns out, and I don't know whether we can do that or not. And again, you know, there's like, okay, it's a restriction always so long as the cop is sitting there, right?
Yeah.
But, but you know, I mean, it, you know, I'm really concerned about any traffic on the High Street that really requires left turns in or left, left turn out, even though there, there are only 12. And I was out there the other day, I mean, there's, there's nobody that goes up there and turns left, I have to say.
Right, sure.
Or at least that I saw.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I think with, yeah, what is it, a total of 18 parking spaces that we have? So potential for 18 cars as a relatively low impact, but yeah, no, I agree. I mean, certainly I'd be inclined, if I lived there, to take a left.
Right, right.
Sure.
Yeah, I think the, I think the AMP came out to like six trips and the AMP and eight and the, so it's, it's very little. It seems to me it's more the users will know as they live there.
Will be educated.
They're going to know which way they should be turning out of the driveway.
The question is, how do they learn that?
Yeah.
They're going to go right down to Water Street. They're going to go to Water Street at four o'clock and see what it's like down there.
Well, Jonathan, you could, you could have a brochure that explains the intricacies of exiting an empty.
Which way you should turn.
I probably should do that, knowing some of my tenants, yeah.
I can see a nice traffic control device at the exit that says, really shouldn't go this way.
Right. We highly recommend.
On the, on the, are you done? I don't want to.
Just one other. On an email we got forwarded or got a copy of from Doug and Betsy Artson.
Artson, yeah.
Have you had a chance to see that?
Oh, I met with them back in February of 2021, and we have substantial go-arounds in how they want this to be from the exterior point of view. And I can show you some of it. And we've completely and totally complied with how they want the exterior of the facade to look and given them architectural renderings. And they have since gone over and put their drafts on top of it on how they would like it to be. And we, we, we met with all the neighbors back in March and, and, and proposed what we were going to do. Everyone was happy with it. They wanted some input on the siding, the roofing, the roof lines. And then we, we, I'm happy to comply with, so everyone's happier, right? And that worked out pretty good. So, you know, I would hope there's no opposition after all that. And I can show you all the stuff of going back and forth. I mean, it's pages and pages. I mean, she submitted architectural elements of Ellsworth in general on, none of these buildings being on Pine Street, but just some architectural renderings of different roof lines and pitches around the city of Ellsworth. And so, you know, we listened to what she had to say, we let her have some input, and I think, I think everything is good, so.
Is, is that something that's actually, I mean, some of these concerns actually enforceable under the ordinances that we have right now?
No.
I mean, it's basically him being a nice guy.
Yeah, again, not our obligation, but we want to make sure that everyone's happy with our development and we're not.
No, but I, but I, but I just, you know, mean that as a, as a comment in general because, you know, the, the public comes in and says, oh, you know, stop this because it's ugly or whatever.
Sure, I agree.
You know, and I get that and, and I sometimes actually have sympathy for that, okay?
Yeah.
At the same time, relative to the ordinance, we don't really have design standards, external visual stuff.
We don't.
And so note to self, you know, going forward, if we want to have some of that, that needs to be written in extremely carefully into a, the ongoing ordinance to-do list.
Yes. Yeah, I think that that was kind of enclosing what Ms. Artson was trying to say, like, what are we looking forward to? What do we want this community to be?
Oh, and it's a perfectly valid question, but I'm just make, drawn a line between what we can do and require here now and what they might want to see, what I, what I might want to see, I mean, you know.
Elena?
Yes.
Would it be handy to have a copy of Mr. Bates's materials on file at the office?
That, that's a, I can photocopy all that stuff. And that way you can have all, that's a bunch of correspondence back and forth with different siding selections.
Can you just stick it in the application someplace?
Sure.
Yes, if that, if that's what you want to do, I mean, again.
Yeah, it's, it's. Well, it might be made to have it in the, in the, in the application. Again, it's not something that we can necessarily.
It's not enforceable.
Yeah, but it might be nice to see it.
But it might be something to build on in future.
I see what you're saying.
Revisions to ordinance.
Yeah, just for my own, for our own.
If we want to do design standards, then give some material.
Yes, I thought you meant more specific to this project, but yeah.
No, 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 just in general.
In regards to that, one thing that I have to point out is that one thing that was mentioned was, were we going to keep it consistent with the architecture of Spruce and Pine Street? And I don't know if anybody's driven down there lately, it's not very consistent at all. So then we needed to get together and say, okay, what is the actual, because we took pictures and tried to figure it out and, you know, it's definitely not consistent, to say the least.
Based on the consistency, you could do anything.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. It's only consistent and it's inconsistent.
Right. We didn't want to do that, so we met with the heart of Ellsworth, Cara Romano, and Bill Fogel was there, Peter Leon, he's on Franklin Street. And they were all delighted that we were there to, to show them what we wanted to do and, and have their input. So I think it was a win-win. I, you know, certainly wasn't a waste of time, I think everyone left pretty happy. And we got their input on, on how it's going to look. I mean, they're going to have to look at it. Like Mr. Hammer said, who was my soccer coach, he's a sweet guy, by the way. You know, no one wants to blindside anybody, you know, so they don't know what's going on, especially if they live across the street, in my opinion. I think it's the right thing to do, not required, but the right thing to do.
Are there many other 40-foot buildings on that street?
Yeah, the building next door is like 57 or something like that.
And just out of curiosity, is this apartment being geared towards any specific group of people? Is it going to be like lower income housing?
Open market. What's that? I'm sorry.
Just wondering who these apartments will be accessible to once the project is completed.
Yeah, it's market housing, so anybody and everybody is welcome, yeah. I guess if you're asking for.
Is it going to be furnished?
Yeah, we're going to furnish these, yeah. So with our walkability to downtown, that's what we're trying to capitalize on, is that people could stay and, and maybe in a shorter term, like a six-month or a three-month, and have the ability to walk to the hospital, walk to the restaurants and so on and so forth. So we'll fully furnish them and, and have flat panel TVs on the walls and, you know, internet and cables included and all that stuff.
And are there any ordinances around how short, short-term rentals can be?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I, I understand the Airbnb world is bonkers, of course, right now, and that's a hot topic. I don't have the time or space to, to go anything shorter term than three months. So that would be the lowest we would go.
But legally, you're not, you wouldn't be required to promise that?
No.
Potentially you could change your mind and it could become a 10 or 12-unit Airbnb? Is that, just trying to remember.
I mean, legally, yes, something I wouldn't be interested in, no. But I guess the answer to your question is legally, I could.
And.
I wouldn't mind a hotel downtown.
It's been proposed many times. I have a hotel going up the street, further up the street.
Of course you do, that's why you do.
That's for another day. Not too far off.
Because I think your neighbors and just in general, the friends you've made, I see through this process.
Yeah.
Would probably be less friendly if that became the case, if it was like supporting year-round families and community and industry versus, again, not legally your problem, but.
You would think that, but it's actually the opposite. When I met with them, they were delighted to have short-term stay. They actually, I mean, I think the Artsons have Airbnb in their house.
Fascinating.
So, you know, they're excited about new community members coming in and more frequently. However, again, I just, that's not my intention.
Sure.
Yeah, also, you can't control what would happen if the property changes hands.
This is true.
Yeah, so. One last to see what's.
Oh, this is the, this is.
There's a bunch of our correspondence back and forth with the group of people and, again, all went well. It was the heart of Ellsworth, it was the Green Plan that we met with, which Betsy Artson's a member of. So we met probably four or five times, and every time was, like I said, it was a win-win for both sides.
So any more questions from?
I have one last question about drainage out of the driveway onto the street, okay? When I look at that, you know, I get that, you know, the water, much of the water will flow, I guess, to the south, sort of, you know, on that back curb, right? But there's still some from the northern side of the lot and the driveway itself that looks like it would go straight into the street. Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, we couldn't collect all of it to get it to there, but we reduced it as much as we can.
Okay, and I believe that. My question, though, is what happens to the stuff that you can't collect? I mean, is it just go right out into?
Well, currently it does, right? Currently it goes right out onto the street, so our intention is.
Which is a bad thing.
It's a very bad thing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're going to try and reduce it as, as much as we can.
And, and, and that's, that is consistent with what our ordinance say in terms of not putting any more out into the street than there is currently, so.
There's also, I don't have it all right in front of me, but keep in mind that there's a redevelopment exemption when you are in the urban core and you're right in the watershed of the river below the dam. So this is all, this, I guess, from whatever was gravel or driveway impervious plus the buildings that used to be here, the increase in impervious is actually only like 1,400 square feet, so. So you could take a look at that section.
So and all, and, and all the roof water and so forth goes out towards Spruce Street also with piping and whatnot, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions? So, does any member of the public wish to comment? Probably not. No. Your opponents have abandoned you.
My opponents?
Have abandoned you.
On Pine Street?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're all friends now. I, I prefer it that way.
Okay, like a true developer.
That's right.
In that case, public hearing is closed.
The local developer.
Public hearing is closed. What would the board like to do?
I'm making motion that preliminary plan review for major site use development, major subdivision entitled 64 Pine Street, Robus One LLC. Boils is construct a 12-unit residential apartment building on a 0.37 acre tax map, 134 lots 91 and 104 located at 64 Pine Street and 33 Spruce Street, all subject in the downtown zone is complete.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
I must say, I do like your applications because they're, they're complete.
Thank you, we try our best.
Well, he's, he's turned in so many incomplete ones by this time he's.
Right. It's not our first time around, I guess.
But, you know, as of now, when it's a Jonathan Bates application, I tend not to worry.
Well, that's a good thing.
It's all going to be there, so.
We prefer it that way.
But don't get too complacent.
No, 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 I mean, there's always a chance that, you know, something terrible will happen. What are you giving out here?
Good point. So.
Oh, okay.